Ladies and gentlemen, it's one o'clock. I call this meeting to order of the Criminal Justice Authority. Would you call the role, Mrs. Porter?
Yes, sir. Shelley Perkins?
Present.
James Johnson?
Present.
Sheriff Tommy Johnson, the third?
Present.
Derek Scobie?
Present.
Miles Davidson?
Present.
Stephen Buck?
Present.
Joe Alba?
Present. Thank you. Notice of this meeting was properly posted on Friday, July 10th, before the deadline. And Sheriff, would you kindly lead us in our country's pledge? Thank you, Sheriff Johnson. Next up is public session. We don't have any requests that I know of, so we'll move on to discussion of the meetings. Any additions, corrections to the minutes? If not, I'd entertain a motion to handle both. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. Moved and seconded that we accept the approved meetings, approved meeting minutes for June 10th, 2024. Mrs. Porter, will you call the role?
Shelley Perkins?
Yes.
James Johnson?
Yes.
Derek Scobie?
Yes.
Miles Davidson?
Yes.
Sheriff Tommy Johnson, the third?
Yes.
Stephen Buck?
Yes.
Joe Alba?
Yes. Next is item two. Before we get to item two, there are a couple of things, Mrs. Garner, I'm sorry, on the agenda. I forgot. The number eight and number nine will be postponed. Those are two items, two cases that we'll hear in executive session out before this afternoon. And then item 10 will be struck from the agenda without objection. None of the leaders of the Criminal Justice Advisory Authority could attend to give the report. They had a conflict of timing. So without objection, we'll move on to item number two. This is Garner. Your monthly report, please.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon. So in my presentation today, we're going to give you some updates on the academy, the resident welfare and programs, staff development, some of the infrastructure updates, ongoing projects that we have, and then, of course, our statistics that I provide each month. Currently, we're at 265 employees, and in August of 2023, we had 119 of those was officers, were officers. Right now, we're sitting at 167 of them being officers. Those are people that are trained to work within the resident population that we have. And then the other statistics are there. If you care to review them, I'm happy to answer questions about any of those. We did graduate 2402, our academy, the second academy of the year. We graduated 27 officers and five support officers. They are in on-the-job training, and we did the graduation at Rose State College. Thank you so much, Professor Johnson, for helping make that connection. It was a really special event. The staff that we currently have are actually a little jealous because they didn't have a graduation that was up to par. And we're looking forward to the next graduation being at Rose State. We've already secured the venue, anticipating 50 people in the next academy. Employee recruitment. So we do have an onsite job fair Thursday, July 11th, from 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. We're going to have onsite demonstrations. We'll do onsite applications with interviews. I want to do something a little different with this, so we're going to have staff available so we can have almost an Ask Me Anything Q&amp;A session so they can get a real feel for what it's like to work there and who some of their teammates will be. We're also going to give a mini tour and a preview of the academy so they know what the expectation is when they get hired on, what kinds of things are they going to be faced with during the academy. And I just left her on since I was on there, just as a reminder. They haven't changed since the last couple of presentations that I've given. Training updates. So our next academy, after quite a bit of discussion, it is going to be extended to eight weeks. We felt that it was necessary because we've added a couple of crucial training blocks. One of them is CIT, that's Crisis Intervention Training. It's a week long. And with potentially 50 candidates going through, we're going to have to have two different cohorts. And so it just made sense to extend it so we can flip-flop what they're doing, the two different cohorts. We are going to do a little bit more in terms of defensive tactics and preparing people, starting at day one. And there's going to be an emphasis on reality-based training, so they get more hands-on experience before they go up on the floors and deal with real-life experience. There is daily PT, and they do that at Scissor Tail Park every morning. And the other thing that I've added is that I want them to have discussions with people that have lived experiences, somebody that has been incarcerated and has been recovering, so they get an understanding of what it is they do and how they can affect change in the people that we serve. Right now, for the next academy that does begin next month, we have 311 applicants since May. Forty-six are currently in the process, somewhere in the process. We have eight that are fully onboarded, 59 were denied, and then we have 30 contract applicants, and that's from the VHS Contract Services that you all approved, maybe last month or the month before, that are going to come in, and we are hoping that they will be part of a site-check team so they can help fill in the gaps when officers are busy doing other things that takes them away from doing the site checks. And I just wanted to kind of remind you all of the professional development. We really focused on training for the last year or so, and if you calculate all those classes, and those aren't even all the classes that they've done, we've invested over 1,000 hours of training into our staff. That was an area that I felt was really lacking, and the classes that they've gone through, it's gone a long way towards building professionalism and helping them be more prepared for not only working in this environment, but also the leadership roles that we expect them to fill. And then we started putting artifacts around the facility. These are just inexpensive ways of reinforcing our mission, vision, and values. This is at the employee entrance, and what it doesn't depict is there's a TV that goes in the center that is just a moving billboard. It announces things like Employee of the Month or different events that we might be having throughout the month, and it calls out, recognizes our staff for the things that they're doing. This is just to reinforce our values and our identity, and it's designed to enhance the employee morale and their engagement, and it's a nonverbal way of letting people know this is what we stand for. Continuing on that, we also have these posters that are around the facility, again, reinforcing our mission, vision, and values. And we also took on the initiative to conduct headshots for all of our employees. And that's kind of a long process, but those are some of the headshots that we have from the most recent graduates. There's an MOU on the agenda related to court services, and it'll be between the Trust and the Board of County Commissioners. They're going to, Court Services currently provides criminal history summary to the judicial, and they use that information to make recommendations for diversion, whether or not somebody could be placed on OR bond, conditional bond, pre-trial release, or maybe eligible for a program. They're going to be transitioning over into our facility, and it just kind of made sense because in order to do the criminal history check, they have to have access to Olets, and it has to fall under a law enforcement entity. And so we have Olets terminals there, and so they're going to come over and start doing their duties there. I think it makes sense for us. It increases the efficiency because they're dealing directly with the population that they're serving, and that's kind of that in a nutshell. If you have any questions about that, again, when we get to the MOU, you're welcome to ask. Our renovations, this is just kind of an update on that. We have completed all of the fourth floor, and we are working on the sixth floor. We have completed A and D pods, and we're currently working on C pod and then the 10th floor David pod. That's our disciplinary unit. And I've tasked our staff with allowing them, the people that are housed there long-term, to start working on that project, to give them something productive to do, and so far, it's going well. And then just a reminder of what the cells look like and what they look like after the renovation. It's a stark contrast. Our current programs, care unit obviously is still going. We're still working to expand that using the front desk staff. We have the Stand Up Initiative. It's geared towards men, 18 to 24, that have a history of violent charges or firearms. Calm Waters for grief support, Alcoholics Anonymous, Prison Fellowship Academy, Shred the Stigma does come in, and they conduct peer recovery support sessions periodically. And then we have thousands of hours of courses on the tablets that are available at no charge. And we were recently awarded a grant for bus passes from the city of Oklahoma City, so we'll have 720 of those, 60 monthly to give out to people that are getting released that need transportation. Some of the things that are in development, this isn't really news. We talked about the 13th floor. Those are just some mockups. It's obviously not going to look like that, but just kind of the vision of where we want to head for that 13th floor ball court. We are still launching the Veterans Initiative through Team. We're just awaiting background checks on the facilitators for that. Narcotics Anonymous, same story. Opportunities Industrialization Center, still working on that for the GED. Recently made connection with somebody at Metro Tech, so we may be able to bring in some occupational courses to the residents. And still working on the voting initiative. We recently sent out a survey to the residents there, and in two weeks, we received 74 responses. Most people are very interested in voting if they are eligible to do so, and so we're moving forward with that. We do have a new commissary vendor. It's Benchmark, and that transition began July 1. For the most part, it's still going on. The transition is, we're having some issues getting some of the data that we need from our previous vendor, but we hope to have that worked through this week. And I just wanted to include some of the cost examples. I know that question was brought up last time. You can see that it's pretty comparable to just going to a convenience store, and in some cases, it may be a little cheaper. We are expanding some of the offerings that they have available, including the reading glasses and then some of the gender-responsive items, like feminine hygiene products that we've never allowed before. Not to get too detailed, but typically, they only allow pads, and we are expanding it to allow other options. So, and then hair care options. Our loading dock project, this is funded through ARPA. The doors are complete. We're still waiting for the dock to be fabricated and installed. We're expecting that to be done in August. This has helped tremendously because before, we weren't able to use the trash compactor, which increased the bill for our trash services. And so now, and the other thing is, it was a security risk because people would have to go outside. Our resident workers would have to go outside to take out the trash, and of course, there's a gate right there that's easily accessible. Now they don't have to do that. They can do everything without having to go through the large doors. We did finally get the cleaning system installed that y'all approved. It's disinfectant on demand. It's safe. It's not toxic. It's going to save us money in the long run. To get the system installed was about the same cost as it cost us for a year of chemical supplies. After this first year, it'll cost anywhere from, you know, four cents a gallon to make the product. And it is rated by the EPA, and it's noted to kill any viral, bacterial, or fungus. So we're excited to have that.
Excuse me?
Yeah.
How are the residents handling that in staff as well?
So it's fairly new. It was only up and operational as of Friday. I haven't received any feedback on it yet. But the fact that they can have access to this 24/7, and it's not going to harm them, it's not going to create any kind of medical emergency, speaks volumes. So they're going to have increased access to cleaning supplies.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. We have been involved in the new facility planning. We've had multiple meetings with HOK and Blanco. Most recently, we're just working through the administrative and reception and release areas. And I've worked for several hours with HOK on the staffing and what this looks like for the new facility. And my understanding is that they're going to provide a staffing analysis and a cost estimate related to that. We are sending two staff members to visit a site in Montgomery, Alabama tomorrow, and they're going to look at a prefab cell that is being built. And then, once it's being installed, one of them is the maintenance, and one of them is supervisor on the floors. Our IT projects are still coming along. We have upgraded the camera network, or we're working to upgrade the camera network. It's just going to provide more clarity and reduce the lag that we have when we're reviewing the video footage. We are revitalizing the video arraignment technology, and I anticipate next month, there will be an agenda item to speak to what we're wanting to do with this. We're currently using Polycomms, which there's known security issues with, and nobody wants to host them on their network because of that, not even the state. And so we needed to come up with another solution, and our IT department, I think, has a pretty solid solution for the courts. We're still working on developing the electronic incident reporting and the resident count and making sure that everything is logged in jail tracker. It's a slow process. It's new for everybody. They're used to using the manual logs, and it's just, technology is scary for people that don't readily use it. And it's just, it's going to take some time to get everybody fully transitioned over. It's kind of small to see, but the top 10 charges are use of a firearm by a felon and possession of CBS. This is, these stats are from the current population that we have. Murder. We have 119 people that are charged with murder currently in the facility, 15 for manslaughter. 168 have charges of a sexual nature, and 74 have aggravated drug trafficking charges. You can see our population is still slowly climbing. Again, it's summertime. It's expected. I really hope that with the transition to court services there, that we are able to get people screened quite a bit faster so we can hopefully get some of these people out that are on lower-level charges. Current population as of today is 1,416, and that is compared to 1,495 about this time last year. So we're still lower than what we were last year. We're still climbing, and that's not really a trend that we like to see. Self-reporting, 40 people report that they are a veteran. 25 have said that they're homeless. We have 115 waiting to be transported to DOC. 173 are age 50-plus. Unfortunately, I couldn't get the list for the Oklahoma Forensics Center transport before this meeting, so I can get that number to you after the meeting. And then the number of people that are brought in based on agency, again, Oklahoma City continues to be our top utilizer at 65%, followed by Oklahoma County Sheriff's Office at 18%, and then it just kind of dwindles down from there. That concludes my presentation. Do you have any questions, comments, concerns?
Okay, trustees, questions, comments?
Yes, I have one. Thank you for mentioning on the items, excuse me, that you say on the canteen. What about the variety? And I'm just going off of what I was told by some of the residents when we, Speaker Steele, I were there. So is it a pretty good variety or?
It is. They actually offer name-brand items as opposed to the vendor brand. It's kind of a generic brand. And anything that we want to offer them, they can get for us. They have a local warehouse, which was one of the draws to going with this company because they can readily service us at any point that we need it.
It would be nice at some point just to kind of see what's offered. I mean, the prices are very reasonable, I believe, but just to kind of see what's offered.
Sure. I can send you a list after this meeting.
And as a reminder, Benchmark is going to take over food service on the 22nd of this month, working on it, thereabouts.
Yes.
Which will be a vast improvement to the residents of the facility and staff.
Absolutely. I'm hoping that we will be able to have more fresh food options. And one of the things that I really like is that when we have resident workers that are working in the kitchen, they have a program that they can get them certified at SafeServe, which is a basic certification that anybody needs if they're going to work in the restaurant industry.
Any other questions, comments? Mr. Vice Chairman?
Director, we talked a little bit last in June about a year-to-year comparison of some of the data points. Not having that, can you, can you parallel the trend we're seeing in this summer ramp up as far as the acceleration of the number of detainees versus what might have historically occurred? Is detainee count adding at a more significant rate? Is the trend line comparable? What observations do you have on that?
Without having the data in front of me, I would still say that it's slower than what the rate was last year and then the preceding years.
Even though the count for Oklahoma City has gone up on a monthly basis?
Correct.
So you can extrapolate. All right. Other comments, questions? Mr. Scobie, Reverend Scobie, I'm sorry.
Director Garner, thank you for the report you've given thus far. Compared with speaking to two years ago, would you share with us some of the improvements that have been made in the jail? Which I see many, but I think people need to hear some of those compared with speaking to two years ago.
Gosh. I have a whole list, but I don't have it with me. First, I would say that the quality of staff has gone up, and the culture has changed for the better. It's more positive. You have people that are actually enjoying their jobs, and I think the level of supervision has increased. We're not where we want to be yet, but we're definitely making great strides in that direction. Our training has absolutely improved. We've gone from, I want to say it was like eight or nine days of training total before somebody was put on the floors to start working in this environment, to now six weeks, and then next month, we'll be up to eight weeks. And then that doesn't include the on-the-job training portion. It's more training than any jail that I know of across the state, and maybe some compared to, you know, the nation. I'm really proud of our training program. The programs, I know that two years ago, we didn't really have any programs to speak of. Now we have some. We're not where we want to be, but we're definitely making progress in that direction. The facility as a whole, I think, is cleaner. The renovations certainly help a lot in that endeavor. It helps you to be able to see the dirt and grime and not just deal with the buildup and turn a blind eye to it. It's more obvious now. And I think that the residents greatly, you know, appreciate having a cleaner environment that's brighter, and they respect it more. The other improvement that I can think of off the top of my head is that they definitely get out now for recreation, whereas before they didn't. When I first got here, it wasn't unusual for them to only get out maybe an hour a day and two days a week, three days a week, and when you're talking up to 90 people in a pod, and they're all trying to get out and compete to make their phone calls, their video visits, and stretch their legs, and take showers, it made for a very volatile environment. Those are just a few off the top of my head. There's a whole list of things that we've done that I feel have improved quite a bit. And I'm working to try to get data on it so we can actually see and visualize what this looks like. It's just, it hasn't been at the top of my priority list to showcase everything that I think that we've made improvements on, so.
Last question. In-office fielding phone calls, work at home, how many hours per week would you say that you work?
Gosh. 60 more, 60 or more. I'm never really off. Even if I'm on vacation, I take my phone with me, I take my laptop with me, so I'm available at any time because I just never know what's going to happen.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments? All right. Ms. Buck? One of the things you left out, speaking with trustees and not you, about changes, one that you overlooked was the change of leadership that you brought. And I am elated and grateful for those that you've hired and appointed to key positions. It's a huge step in changing the culture that's been here for, you know, probably a century or almost a century.
Yes, sir.
It's a different environment now. I wish the public could see this. There's no way for that to happen except through the blessing of television, that sometimes they're with us, sometimes they're against us. That's life. But I appreciate your leadership, as does everyone here around the horseshoe. Nothing replaces good leadership, but good leadership. And you're showing the way. You're changing everybody's attitude, and I can see that that reaches to our customers, the detainees, the folks that don't want to be there. And there is a certain amount of empathy and understanding that I see in most of the new recruits that you all are bringing into the house, male and female. Doesn't matter what color either. Your recruiting director is doing an outstanding job the last couple of classes. And that's only, what, three or four months they've been on the job in that position?
Yes, sir.
It's huge, giant leaps. Progress goes forward in small pieces, small steps. But I hope that eventually, the story's going to be told for the citizens of Oklahoma County that we are making a lot of changes. We do care about not only our staff, but our guests, if you will. Some stay longer than others. We now have to address health and mental health, and those are the two big slices of the apple we're just now beginning to have time to focus on. So thank you for your leadership. And tell your leadership team to keep it up. They're doing a great job.
Thank you.
Anything else? If not, we'll receive a motion to accept Mrs. Garner's report.
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Mrs. Porter, would you call the role to receive her report?
Shelley Perkins?
Yes.
James Johnson?
Yes.
Derek Scobie?
Yes.
Miles Davidson?
Yes.
Tommy Johnson, the third?
Yes.
Stephen Buck?
Yes.
Joe Alba?
Yes. Thank you, Mrs. Garner. And now you're up again for item number three, which is the MOU you discussed earlier for court services. I think you gave a pretty good explanation of what's going on. The only thing you left out is who's paying for this?
The Board of County Commissioners.
Okay, good.
And right now, we have.
And you're going to make sure the money's there, right? All right. All right. Any questions about court services?
I'll ask for the public records what I asked when you were briefing me on the project. With, in your evaluation, this move will make us collectively better. Is that a fair statement?
Absolutely, well.
This will expedite the processing of individuals for OR, medical, et cetera, correct?
Correct.
By allowing them to actually go in person, in place to help these individuals get through the process.
Yes.
And there's a total of four?
There's a total of four now that are coming over.
Four to come over?
Well, that's all that's left of the court services. There were six, I think. Two of them have found employment elsewhere.
Right.
So if we need to increase this, then we will come back with an addendum. But right now, we're going to start with what we have and see how it works out and then we'll increase accordingly.
The funding was approved by the Budget Board for all six positions. With the four that were actually moving over.
Why don't we go hire two more then?
Find them. I don't think anybody.
Tell our recruiting officer.
Okay.
If we're able to get them clean certified, moving them through the up and down and get them through the training, up and down inside the jail to help expedite the process. And I think that's only going to be a huge boom, so.
Any other questions, comments on this? We have a motion on the floor. Mrs. Porter called the, oh, we don't have a motion.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Have a second? Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Motion is now on the floor for the approval of the Court Services MOU. Mrs. Porter, please call the roll.
Shelley Perkins?
Yes.
James Johnson?
Yes.
Derek Scobie?
Yes.
Miles Davidson?
Yes.
Tommy Johnson III? Stephen Buck?
Yes.
Joe Alba?
Yes. Now we have item five or item four, which is Mr. Sherman, his financial report. And then he'll follow up with item five, which are our invoices and payroll. Mr. Sherman.
Good afternoon. I don't know if everybody can see that okay.
No.
Well, I can't fix that, Mr. Chairman.
Shouldn't have asked the question.
Valid point. So for this meeting, the total income in June was $3,087,115, which was an unfavorable variance to the budget of $142,210. Most of our revenue, of course, still comes from the general fund of Oklahoma County. Our other sources of income for the month were the Department of Corrections revenue, which was $64,098. And it was below budget by $85,902. I will point out that with the private facility closing, our assumption is, is that our county jail backup is going to start to get a little more full until they can find places to move those current residents out of the GO facilities.
They, didn't they have a one-year continuation?
Oh, did they?
I believe that was announced last week.
But I've just, so if that stays the same, then we'll probably, because they've been, they've been pulling chain a lot quicker and more often than they have in the past. So our telephone revenue was $131,027, which was above budget by $1,027. Our commissary revenue was $56,156, which was below budget by $3,844. And on the commissary, that's actually going live this afternoon. They had all the datas set and cleaned and then they were, they said they should be going live this afternoon. So our residents should be getting their commissary back online. There were no municipalities contract boarding revenue for the month. And of course, the Oklahoma City contract is still pending. We have sent out the new contracts to all the municipalities. Only three of those have not received, or have not acknowledged they received them yet. But the other sixteen or either thirteen or sixteen, right? So the other fourteen have received theirs and have acknowledged with a return receipt. So on our expenses, our total expenses for June were $3,7850, or $3,7850 for a favorable variance to the budget of $142,074. Our salaries, wages and benefits totaled $1,631,618 for the month and was below budget by $197,634. Our resident onsite medical care was $611,296 for turnkey comprehensive medical services. Our resident offsite medical care was $23,824 and was below budget by $44,176. On some of our resident offsite medical care, some of the things we're dealing with is we're having to go back and pay some invoices that had been left for a couple of years that are going to be some high dollar ones, but we can't get our residents seen at these facilities until we cover old invoices. So just wanted to trust to be aware that that's something we are, we are dealing with.
I'd like to know when you're finished with that, how far back this goes.
Yes, sir. I'll get with, we're using Heritage Health as our offsite medical. I'll get with them and we'll drill down and get those numbers.
We ought to have a list of those.
Okay, I'll get that.
Yeah, if you could get it done by the next meeting or so, that would be great.
Absolutely, that's not a problem.
How many are there? Ten, fifteen?
Oh, more than that.
Great Scott.
I think that the last count that I had from Heritage, maybe thirty-five, thirty-six? But I will double check and make sure because some of those, they might have gotten resolved and I just didn't know that they.
We're not spending money that recklessly, are we?
No.
Okay, that's the right answer. Wonderful. Taxpayers appreciate that.
Okay, so back to the, our utilities for electricity was $21,061. And that was below the budget by $22,939. I think some of that is part of the fact that we have several pods, the floors closed down, that we're not running a lot of electricity through there except for the lights for them to paint and.
The new equipment, the new equipment upstairs, is that making a difference with HVAC?
I'll have to ask Mr. Anderson.
That's, that's an interesting question. I mean, that's, that's half of the budget since that, that project was completed.
And it's been, it's been pretty consistently, you know, well below budget.
Wow.
Our professional and service, our professional service legal fees were $18,897. Our professional service other fees was $27,352, which of course is for some of the painting and janitorial services. Our janitorial supplies were $54,951. Of course, that, that's to pay for our service wing, which is our disinfectant on demand. Our telecommunications services were $25,595, which $12,423 will be in reverse, will be reimbursed from the county for the ARPAN networking project. And our telecommunications equipment for the ARPAN networking project were $35,721. And we will be getting reimbursed, reimbursed from the county for that, that expenditure. And attached, of course, we have a copy of our revenue and expenses. Don't know if anybody has any questions related to anything in the presentation?
I assume we keep whittling down on our outside attorneys.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Mr. Buck?
So this effectively closes our fiscal year, correct?
Yes, sir.
Do you keep and maintain a list of receivables that might be owed the trust?
Yes, we do.
Any contacts you can offer on that side of the equation?
We have, we have one that's coming up on 60 days. And then we have, of course, our Oklahoma City PD contract, which is really 373 days.
Any other questions? Comments? I entertain a motion to accept Mr. Sherman's report. Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you very much. Moved and seconded that we accept the report from Mr. Sherman. All those in favor, please vote. Mrs. Porter?
Shelley Perkins?
Yes.
James Johnson?
Yes.
Derek Scobie?
Yeah.
Miles Davidson?
Yes.
Tommy Johnson III?
Yes.
Stephen Buck?
Yes.
Joe Alba?
Yes. Now we go to item five, Mr. Sherman.
Yes, let's see there.
All the invoices?
Yes, sir, I'm sorry. No, the invoices. Yeah.
I think the invoice pages, that's 177.
Yeah, that's not the master list.
I saw my printer, I think at 150, I just had enough.
Do the one right below that and see if that, no, the one, which one did you, did you? Okay, do, do that one and let's see if that's, oh, that's the claims. Yeah. No? That's not it. Yeah, I know. I guess I.
Is it Exhibit A? Is it the list of interclaims and invoices proposed, like summarized?
It's what it should be, yes.
Claims list.
That's there, there it is. So these were our, this is the list of everything that we paid for this last month. I don't know if anybody has any questions on any of the information in there. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Is this the only one we approve? Okay, so I'd entertain a motion. No questions?
Motion to approve.
Thank you very much. Is there a second? Thank you. Motion and seconded to accept the invoices for the incoming month or the previous month.
Give me just a moment, I apologize, I need to correct the second.
Heaven forbid, technology. Yes, Mrs. Porter, we're ready for you to call the roll.
Shelley Perkins?
Yes.
James Johnson?
Yes.
Derek Scobie?
Yes.
Miles Davidson?
Yes.
Tommy Johnson III?
Yes.
Stephen Buck?
Yes.
Joe Alba?
Yes. Next item is item six, Ms. Hanson. Mrs. Hanson? Please step forward, give us your report.
All right, I'm here to report on our education coordinator.
Pull the mic down too, yeah, that's great.
We hired Ms. Amy Simmons. She was a EMT who became a paramedic, who's now a registered nurse that works at OCDC. She's in charge of all our education. She enjoys what she's doing. We have monthly and annual training that she presents to the team. She has instructed staff how to better handle emergencies. She goes down with emergency, she goes disaster management training. And she's also a CPR instructor. We have given Narcan training to all of our staff so they can be more aware of when to give Narcan, how to give Narcan, not give too many Narcan. And for those who don't, are not able to make the training, Amy will go to them to ensure that everyone gets the training. She has created a training program for OCDC and Turnkey. Some of the training are up there on the, on the screen. Hypothermia documentation, Narcan, CPR, stroke, seizures are some of our common ones that we see there at the jail. She's given IGEL training, which is something you put in the mouth to help them not aspirate. And we can easily suction them if they're becoming unconscious. She's very, very good at what she does. We also do large scale disaster management. She's also created a how-to book for quick reference and the benefits of those. Taking a blood pressure manually versus a little electric wrist cuff. Listening to lung sounds, how to wash your hands appropriately, how to identify sepsis. We have quarterly trainings with OCDC medical and custodial teams to allow better training and communication of all emergent situations. So that way we can work better as a team, reduce residual effects of our patients by knowing the next steps. Let's see what else. So with her training, we all become one team and we can better function and do a handoff to emergency services better. We also have a debriefing with our provider and she gives positive or negative feedback on how we can do our man down situations and our emergencies a little better or better patient outcomes. She is worth her weight in gold. She's really good at what she does.
How long has she been on board?
She has been there about two years now, yeah.
Is there a way that a certain amount of cross-training can take place, not only with medical staff, but our detention officers, all the core? I mean, I'm sure they get something in, in, in the academies, but she sounds like she's a little more.
We're planning a large scale disaster and we're not going to announce it, we're just going to go do it.
Right.
So it'll be some, some big casualty and we'll all go and then we will, we will debrief afterwards just to make continuity of care better and our handoff to paramedics seamless.
That's a great plan. Thank you for doing that. Thank you for thinking about it. Any questions or comments for Mrs. Hanson? Do you have anything else you need to share with us?
I'm good at the moment.
Okay.
Okay.
Please continue the education.
Yes, yes, we do.
We need it. Trustees need it, staff needs it, public needs to be aware of it. Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
Thank you very much. Next, we have a resolution. Mr. Smith, Mr. Alan Smith is going to be talking about unclaimed property and authorizing the district attorney to initiate proceedings to allow disposal of such items. This is your big moment, Alan.
Big.
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 Really big. TV cameras even here for you.
You're going to give me a time one minute this time?
I will.
Thank you. So it's actually Investigator Sandberg's baby. However, I told him I'd do my favorite and handle it for him. So since 1995, items have been accumulating at the county jail, unclaimed property. There's a very large shed, like it's a 30 by 40 shed and a secure parking lot, this area of the facility.
Could you bring the mic a little closer to your face? Thank you very much. Is that better?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
So the shed is full of abandoned property. It's a literal, it's several tons of property. Most of it is excess property, jewelry, clothing, IDs, things like that, that were never claimed by residents of the jail. For the last, let me see here, I'm trying to read his notes. Okay, well, his notes are horrible. But essentially, we have a ton of property that belongs to people that will never be claimed. We've done our best to find out where the property belongs, if it's attached to any type of report, anything like that. To no avail, didn't, has not worked out. So right now, as we speak, Investigator Sandberg is out inside the shed collecting more property. He's divvying it all up, so he's putting all the IDs together, all the clothing items together, all the jewelry. We've talked to Department of Public Safety, they told us to destroy all of the IDs. Driver's license paperwork, stuff like that, they don't want it. We're working with the DA's office on anything that has any monetary value with it. They've come up with a plan for that. They'll itemize everything, list it in the newspaper if it's not claimed within so many days. They've come up with a plan for that, uh, they'll itemize everything, list it in the newspaper, if it's not claimed within so many days, then we'll sell it at that point. Yeah, that's, it's a bunch of stuff.
Great, since ninety-five. Rod, do you have any comments about this? Yes, sure, on, on the operational side, when it comes to you all disposing it? No? Okay. No statement either? Okay. Thank you, we need to approve this. MOU, is that correct? With, with the, with the, oh, it's a resolution, yes. All right, any comments, questions? Motion, thank you.
Move approval of the resolution as presented.
Thank you. Mrs. Porter, please call the roll.
Shelley Perkins?
Yes.
James Johnson?
Yeah.
Derek Scobie?
Yes.
Miles Davidson?
Yes.
Tommy Johnson the third?
Yep.
Stephen Buck?
Yes.
Joe Alba?
Yes. Item eight and nine were postponed until the executive session's over with, and they, then will return with Item sixteen and seventeen from the executive session. We have next, Item ten, and the Criminal Justice Authority Citizens Advisory Board is not able to be with us today, as I mentioned earlier. Item eleven, our next, uh, circle up will be in August, August twelfth this year. Anybody have any comments for the good of the order before we ask for an executive session motion?
And Chairman, I know I'm not a member of the Criminal Justice Authority, uh, Board, but I would like to have some things on the record.
Sure, sure, absolutely.
On our visit, a speaker I met, uh, with, uh, residents, female unit and male. This speaker said that, that there's been improvement on the bed bug issue. I would say there's been a stark improvement. My last visit there, uh, there was a, one of the male residents showing me all the bed bug bites and so forth. When we met this time, uh, none of the female residents mentioned anything about bed bugs. And then on the male unit, and on the female unit, we only had six that we pulled out. We met on the unit, they were out for the recs for the male unit. And, um, only one said something, he said he found a bed bug, not bitten by one, so I think stark contrast to, uh, uh, the previous time I was there, so, uh, kudos to you and your staff regarding all that. Uh, second of all, we asked, the speaker asked about interaction with staff, it was very positive. There were six, uh, of the female residents we met with, all but one said it's improved greatly, the ones who didn't, that was her first time there, so she had nothing to compare it to. And similar with the male unit, so I just wanted to share that. The only thing that I said I, to the speaker I would follow up on is they asked for books, and I know it's kind of hard with a thousand mates, but I don't know if you're aware of the Public Library has Friends of the Library sale, but they're free to facilities, and that's, we've missed it because it was February, but I just can keep that in mind and be able to get books and, uh, for them, that's one thing they said, it'd be nice to have something to read, so, anyways, but overall, very positive. So I just wanted that on the record, that especially the bed bug, that deals with quality of life and to go from, uh, someone showing me multiple bites to saying, we found one. Uh, and, um, and also the improvement of interaction with staff, so I just want to make sure that's on the record.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Do you have other comments? If not, we'll move on to a request for an adjournment or recess to move into executive session.
Move recess to executive session?
Is there a second? Thank you. Mrs. Porter? Call the roll, please.
Shelley Perkins?
Yes.
James Johnson?
Yeah.
Derek Scobie?
Yes.
Miles Davidson?
Yes.
Tommy Johnson the third? Stephen Buck?
Yes.
Joe Alba?
Yes. We are recessed, uh, for these four, four items, thank you.
Okay.
Motion to reconvene.
Second.
Shelley Perkins?
Yes.
James Johnson?
Yes.
Derek Scobie?
Yes.
Miles Davidson?
Yes.
Tommy Johnson III?
Yes.
Stephen Buck?
Yes.
Joe Aba?
Yes. That moves us to item 16, Alstat versus OCC JA. We will proceed as discussed, I believe. I asked him that and he said it's in the contract already, so on both items. So I'll entertain a motion to move forward on item 16.
Zoe.
Thank you. This is Porter, would you call the roll?
Shelley Perkins?
Yes.
James Johnson?
Yes.
Derek Scobie?
Yes.
Miles Davidson?
Yes.
Tommy Johnson III?
Yes.
Stephen Buck?
Yes.
Joe Aba?
Yes. Proceed at 17, a state of Davis versus OCC JA. And we proceed as discussed, both dollar amounts. Motion? Thank you, Mrs. Porter.
Shelley Perkins?
Yes.
James Johnson?
Yes.
Derek Scobie?
Yes.
Miles Davidson?
Yes.
Tommy Johnson III?
Yes.
Stephen Buck?
Yes.
Joe Aba?
There's no action on number 18, if I remember correctly. Number 19 with the Oklahoma State Department of Health. I think it's only polite that the health department selects some dates and we select some dates for inspection. Surprise inspections do not benefit anyone, absolutely anyone. And it puts our entire staff in a position where they have to pick which master they're going to listen to. As we all know, you can only serve one master at one time. And I think our current judgment not to allow these surprise investigations is the right course. However, I think it's also reasonable to offer dates to the Department of Health, and they offer us dates, as I said before. We can pick a time, we can prepare for it. Even if we wanted to correct every item in that 13-story building, we couldn't do it overnight. So there is nothing to be gained by not sharing dates and coming to an agreement for inspections. It's reasonable. So there's really no action to be taken on 19. I just believe adults can get together and decide how to move forward. And I would urge that on both sides. Any other comments? Any other questions on 19? All right, I'll entertain, no action, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Did you want to go back to eight and nine?
Eight and nine.
Oh, eight and nine. I thought we just did that on those two items.
Yeah.
Oh, the two contracts. Thought they were included in them. My fault, eight and nine for the contracts. The Alstat contract on number eight, entertain a motion to adopt.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Mrs. Porter.
Shelley Perkins?
Yes.
James Johnson?
Yes.
Derek Scobie?
Yes.
Miles Davidson?
Yes.
Tommy Johnson III?
Yes.
Stephen Buck?
Yes.
Joe Aba?
Yes. Moved to item nine, Davis contract, same as before. Entertained a motion to adopt.
Just real quick, Rod, you asked for a dollar amount that is smaller than the not to exceed amount. Does, do you anticipate the increase?
Deflection. Expert contract.
Okay.
Yep.
Perfect. Much different.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Shelley Perkins?
Yes.
James Johnson?
Yes.
Derek Scobie?
Yes.
Miles Davidson?
Yes.
Tommy Johnson III?
Yes.
Stephen Buck?
Yes.
Joe Aba?
Yes. Now entertain a motion to adjourn. Thank you. Mrs. Porter, oh, we're waiting on a second. You did? Okay, Mr. Buck, thank you. Mrs. Porter?
I'm sorry. Shelley Perkins?
Yes.
James Johnson?
Yes.
Derek Scobie?
Yes.
Miles Davidson? Tommy Johnson III?
Yes.
Stephen Buck?
Yes.
Joe Aba?
Thank you, yes. We are adjourned.